I thought we'll go ahead and open up our work session. Um, please join us in the pledge of allegiance. Commissioner Schulman, would you lead us?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mark, not joining us yet.
There's Jay.
Yeah, Jay?
Okay.
Um. We have no timed items, any additions or delegations?
I do, I have one addition, uh, like county immunity resolution.
Sounds good. Um, Jay, first item, Desert Rose Funeral Chapel. Uh, okay, transport, please.
This is just a simple issue, we don't really have a contract with Desert Rose. But, uh, they want to increase our fee from a thousand to fifteen hundred dollars for when we're required, for when we're required to transport a body to Medford for autopsy. That's decisions made by the VA. Um, we don't have a lot of those. Coincidentally, we had one yesterday. But we only have a couple a year usually. Um, but since it was, you know, we don't have a contract, like I said, this is a business, set either price, this is what we're gonna charge. So. Rather than just letting these things slip by, I want to make you aware of them, make a conscious decision about what we do about it. We don't really have a lot of options, these bodies have to be refrigerated. They have chain of custody issues. Um, you know, the, the bodies preserved in such a way that they're not being here for the autopsy. And then they wait over there while the autopsy is being performed. So I said it's a whole day, more than a day sometimes. She feels bad about it, hates to ask for an increase, but she can't continue to take that kind of a hit. She feels like this is a price that she will lose money sometimes, make decent money other times, depending on the situation, how far it has to be transported. Sometimes they're going far out of the camp, you know?
Like clear Medford and so to speak.
Yeah.
For over there.
Christmas Valley to Medford to Lakeview, you know?
Yeah. And, and again, this is only in the circumstances where the DA is recommending or asking for an autopsy.
Yeah.
Okay, so they come down through the court.
Turning out of state? Would there be a scenario where she'd have to go out of state?
I don't think so. No, because it'd have to be. It'd have to be a medical examiner for our jurisdiction. The good news is they are establishing a medical examiner office in Clamton Falls. It's planned, I don't know how long that will take, but when that happens, this cost will go down again.
Or we make, or we'll discuss this?
Yeah. I mean, we could, I mean, if those costs got unbearable, we, it would be an option to us to transport these bodies ourselves, but we'd have to have a way to, I said, refrigerate them, assure the chain of custody, so it might have to be a deputy taking them, so. Either way, it's gonna end up being a comparable cost if we do anything.
I'll make a comment.
Yeah, um, Commissioner Albersen, thank you, uh, your, your, your volume's really low. Okay.
Can you hear any better?
A little bit.
Um, so. My friends and I were working on a bill that didn't go, that we didn't get a hearing with the Oregon Cemetery Board. Um, so, um, Desert Rose would get paid for all the deaths of unclaimed bodies and, um, and so far we haven't got that done, but I've been working on it. Um. Like Jay explained, um, if they have to pick up a body in Christmas Valley and then haul it to Medford and then back, it's costing them way more money than fifteen hundred dollars. And so. Anyway, just trying to help with that one, but.
Yeah, I, I think the cost is reasonable.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Jay. Do we want to act on this today? I know we have a fairly heavy attended tomorrow. We could go ahead and give us some of these things off the list. I'll entertain a motion on this if there's no further discussion.
Okay, I'll make a motion to, uh, amend the, uh, costs to Desert Rose Funeral Chapel for transportation rates from one thousand dollars to fifteen hundred dollars.
Go ahead, Jay.
Motion's been made and seconded. Um, any additional discussion?
I'm holding.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Alright, motion carries. Um, next item, we have Ann Crumry, Lakeview Bowman's Club, loan. Good.
So in your packet is just a really brief, um, summary of the issue before us this morning. The fair board, in meeting a parking contractor to man the gates for this year's fair, reached out to the bow club, um, to provide that service in exchange for kind of reducing their loan balance with the community development home fund that is under the discretion of the commissioners. So what has occurred to date is the bow club did man those gates and received two thousand five hundred dollars from the fair board in lieu, or for those services. That two thousand five hundred dollars has been applied to their outstanding loan, and now we have a balance of seven thousand ten dollars and seventy seven cents. This loan that was made to the bow club, um, actually has been on the books since two thousand eight. Additional dollars were provided to the bow club in two thousand twelve for facility improvements down here at E Street. The loan at the time it was made in two thousand eight was an interest-free loan. So there is no interest due on this loan, it is just paying off the principal of it. Again, these dollars are solely at the discretion of the commissioners. It can, you know, it states in the, kind of the mission of this fund to be used as grants or loans. And so, a very acceptable use of the dollars to forgive a loan balance if you choose. Another option would be to use the American Rescue Plan Act dollars that allows for support to businesses and nonprofits that have a negative impact from COVID-19. We know the bow club had to cancel a few of their shoots, um, due to COVID. And I think their membership has been impacted from COVID. So before you is a decision on, you know, a couple of things, for, forgiving the total loan balance, the way it sits with the community development loan dollars, forgiving a partial amount with those dollars and ARPA funds, or ARPA funds, um, or none of the above. So, Mark, if you're able to, um, can you give a little bit more background on how this agreement was discussed earlier?
Yeah, thank you, um. So, as Ann said, we, we couldn't find anybody to man the gates of, uh, at the fair, and, um, I don't remember how many total man-hours it is, but it's five people for like thirty-seven hours and thirty-six hours, something like that. And so, um, we couldn't find anybody to do it, and we're coming down to the wire. So, I got ahold of, uh, Craig Foster and asked that the bow club would be, um, interested in doing that, use the money to pay that they earned to pay down part of their loan, and then we'll forgive the rest. And, um, my thought is, is that I don't want the bow, bow club to go out of business because one of the main things, not only are they great for the community, um, Mayor Craig Delarm and Paisley, he's a certified archery instructor, where he could actually have archery teams, uh, and the Lucas girls already went to the national finals, um. I just don't want the bow club to close down because that loan is hanging on their head. And so, my suggestion is, is that they pay, well, the fairgrounds pay them, and then we forgive the rest of the loan, whether you want to use our funds or just do it is, is fine with me. Does that cover it, Ann, or did I need to say something else?
No, that's, that's great. It's a completely discretionary, at this point, yeah.
So, ARPA funds. Uh, we've got them, if we use them on this, it's basically paying ourselves.
Yeah.
Uh, but we could save those funds for something else.
Yes.
That we deem more important.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely. And what's, the, the full amount is about seven thousand?
Seven thousand ten dollars and seventy seven cents is what is outstanding on their principal balance right now.
And if we were to be looking at a split, would we just say half, like half and half basically, use, or?
Well, I was looking at, you know, right off the bat, some of our COVID money, um, was a, a quick twenty-five hundred dollars to businesses, um, right, right, like no paperwork even, remember all of those funds that went out? Uh, second round provided an additional twenty-five hundred with like more lengthy paperwork. So, following those guidelines that we've already seen. You could do something like that if you, if you choose, but you're right, we do, we do have some other ideas for our ARPA dollars.
Yeah.
And so, I just was throwing that out there as a potential if we choose.
Yeah. It's a pretty small bite, you could use some of the ARPA dollars. But I'm perfectly fine with just forgiving it entirely and just keeping it simple and not having to go mess with the ARPA process or justify how we were, we could, I don't know if you want to break that up in like, okay, they canceled two events, what was the projected revenues actually lost from that, because I almost wonder if you'd have to even do that. Maybe it wouldn't just be simpler to just forgive.
Yeah, I don't think we'd have to go into that detail in ARPA, um, reporting requirements. But, again, we don't need to. I'll let you guys think, I mean, we can, these decisions have to be made today, so you guys can kind of think about it, and then tomorrow make the decision. I think we might go. Um, one quick update while I'm sitting in the chair, I just wanted to, um, let you all know that we are in the middle of the audit process, so there have been a lot of interviews, the auditors are not willing to be on site this year, so they're making phone calls, um, scheduling interviews that way. I believe they've sent all of the elected officials and maybe several department heads a survey. So if you've seen that email and haven't responded, please do. That is part of their, uh, information gathering and part of the process to understand our procedures and our risks and, and follow the guidelines. And so, um, I think they'll follow up again if, if they haven't received a response.
And that company is Unqua?
Unqua by Wally Financial Group.
I'm pretty sure that I've seen those emails and I have responded now to all their.
Okay.
I don't feel that I have seen them.
Okay, um, I will follow up and make sure, because it, it is, again, this year without being on site, it is important to communicate or answer as much as we can through this kind of social distancing environment in this process.
If I did, it was months ago.
I mean, I get those surveys all the time from Unqua, it seems like.
And it is a survey, so it, it's possible that you, that it looks like, oh, just some other survey and, and.
It started in the building.
Okay, or it might have gone in your junk email too, so.
Well, if you forwarded that to all the commissioners again, just to make sure, and I'll double check and.
Okay, I will do that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Commissioner Albersen, did you want to discuss, uh, the Bowman Club thing more, or would you be interested in making a motion?
I, I'd make a motion. If you don't mind.
Sure, yeah.
Um, I'll make the motion that we accept, um, a check from them for what the fairgrounds will pay them, and then forgive the, the, the rest of the loan for, um, one second. Seven thousand ten dollars and seventy seven cents. And we're just gonna forgive it and not use our funding.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion's been made, seconded, um, any further discussion?
Thank you guys for helping me out with that, because we are in a tight spot. And so I think it was good for the fairgrounds and for the bow club.
I, I do, in the only discussion, uh, we'd like to hear an update from the Bowman Club at some point to let us know how their standing is, how their participation is, how their future's looking as a club.
Reading.
Alright, thank you. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. Um.
I think Foz would be happy to give that, and I'm, I know he was here this morning and he might have even been able to stay around, but we said no worries, but I'm sure he'll be happy to come back and give that kind of thing, so.
Very.
Right, thank you.
Thank you. Um, next, uh, Stacy Gany, opt recommendations?
Do you want me to go get her, or does, do you, do you know?
Yeah, I can hold off, we can, we can move down the list.
Okay.
If Stacy wants to join us, if not, we can go through it.
Okay.
Because you don't think she wants it, okay.
I've got a question on this.
Sure.
Are we gonna have a deputy DA discussion?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Mm-hmm. He's not available, Stacy has to carry it.
Okay.
Okay. Um, we've got, uh, an OHA agreement. Um, this is the one in the nine seven seven dash zero. Or just nine seven seven.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know which one this is.
So this is the grant that Judy Clark put in for and received. That is pretty lengthy.
Yeah, so, very tedious.
And this needs, uh, final approval from the board.
Yes. It was, uh, a hundred thousand, I believe. Alright. And it goes, it's, I think the, uh, the duration is from July one to June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-three. July one of this year to June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-three. I'll entertain a motion on the OHA agreement.
Okay, I'll make the motion to approve document number one seven one nine seven seven dash zero. The Oregon Health Authority, it's grant agreement, yeah, same number, for the fiscal impact of one hundred thousand dollars. Two K.
Okay.
Back in.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Um, next up, um, OHA agreement, um, ending with, uh, four two eight. This.
It's for tort liability insurance?
Yeah.
For mental health. No fiscal mark.
It's actually, and I, I did notice when I was reading through this a couple of days ago, it just, it's, may provide tort liability coverage. Doesn't necessarily say they will.
Always depends.
Yeah, I guess so. So it's pertaining to mental health and tort liability coverage. Alright, um, I'll entertain a motion on the IGA.
I'll make the motion to approve the IGA number one seven one four two eight for tort liability coverage as a provider for psychiatric security review board as presented.
Is that a second?
Yeah, sorry, I can talk very loud.
Uh, no worries. Um, motion's been made, seconded, any, uh, further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alright, um, Vietnam War Memorial. Um. Commissioner Albersen, you wanted to bring this forward. Um, I don't have the, uh, the paperwork in front of me on this. Um, were you thinking of a donation amount?
Um, I was thinking probably what we donated last year, um, they're, they're getting close to acts, we start breaking ground, and I, I sent Melvin email, or I think I forwarded it to you, Mommy. Um, it had a date of when they're starting it, and it's gonna be right across from the Capitol and Salem. And as you guys know, you know, uh, I'm very, alright, I'm really close to the Vietnam vets, because I had two brothers in that conflict. Um, and so, it means a lot to me to support them. And so, and then we have several Lakeview people, um, you know, men that passed away over there in Vietnam. So I think it'd be very far accounting to, uh, support that.
Do we know what the, uh, amount was last year?
I think it was like a thousand bucks, but I'm not a hundred percent sure. Do you remember Melanie?
I don't remember donating last year, I'll have to look into it.
Yeah, I can't remember what that figure was, I, I don't even remember if we actually did donate, I, I think we did, but I, I can't remember.
Oh, here we did, because the email stated that we did, but, so, um.
Okay.
I don't have that in front of me.
So regardless of what we did last year, I think that the amount you're talking about, Commissioner Albersen, is probably appropriate. It's very reasonable, if, yeah.
What fund would you like to use, Mark?
I don't know. Not to, not to thank too hard. General, it's really hard for me right now.
We could use two fifteen for projects.
Sounds great, Mel.
That's discretionary, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Would you like to make a motion, Mark?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to support the Vietnam Memorial across from Oregon State Capitol. Uh, the donation of our contribution of a thousand dollars. Um, and I apologize, I didn't hear what fund that was, but Melanie, so, that was a project fund.
That's two fifteen.
Okay, and I will second that motion?
Alright. Um, motion's been made, seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Um, next up is COVID leave discussion, uh, Jay was going to join us for this and have. Do, do you mind maybe grabbing Jay real quick? Jay, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, you're good.
Yeah, that'd be great. Um.
So, until Jay gets back, I'll just, um, we've had a couple of employees, I don't want to mention their name because they have COVID, and, um, one of them ran out of time, uh, used all their, uh, sick leave on COVID, and then had to get a surgery, and then didn't have any paid sick time, uh, similar thing happened to another person. We, early in the COVID crisis, um, they started out with fourteen days and then moved it to ten days, and then I didn't realize that we still were at that time and run out, and so, with Jay, so.
Yeah, so, and I know when you have new employees that don't necessarily have sick time, and Jay, if you want to speak to this a little bit.
Oh, you're already talking about?
Yeah, we, Commissioner Albersen wanted to.
So we had emerg, government instituted emergency COVID leave last year. It was two weeks of, of leave, that wouldn't, you wouldn't be required to use your own sick bank. You could use that either, what, eighty hours or what's thirty-seven and a half times two?
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five hours, um. And so we did hardly had anybody use that last year, because we didn't really have many COVID cases. Well, we have had recently, and we have some employees who don't have enough paid leave or sick leave to cover that. So, that's where the discussion's coming from. We have, uh, we have some options here that we could, let me, let me back up a little bit. Back in January, after that leave expired, um, an email went out amongst all the HR directors in the state asking the question, you know, is anybody considering extending this leave? Um, almost unanimously, they said, no, we're not, and we're not because we got taken advantage of in two thousand twenty. Um, nearly all their employees used that leave, um, whether it was valid or not, they used it and they felt they got taken advantage of. We aren't in that kind of situation, this is a hard rock and, we're taller type community, and we just don't see that kind of abuse here, so. Um.
So you're asking us to allow COVID leave in lieu of sick leave?
Well, we're just bringing forward the, go ahead, Mark.
I'm actually, uh, bringing it forward, I went through Jay, figured it out.
Okay. So, basically for those, maybe just scenario-wise, an employee that doesn't have any sick days yet, but, you know, because they're fairly new or whatnot, if we have this option available to us, they would still be able to get paid if they'd have some degree of sick leave that they could use.
Yeah, so your options are, I mean, you can just extend that leave through a certain time period, maybe the end of the year, or you could extend it with some restrictions. Um, one of the department heads would like to see us only extend that emergency leave to people who have already exhausted all of their sick leave. Um, that helps those people who don't have any of the newer employees, but he feels like it could help him be able to manage that sick leave and help people be more accountable. Um, but then.
Here, then, I think you'll get a reaction from people who do have sick leave, who are having to use it and someone else is not having to.
Right, it's, it's not, it's not, in essence, it's not fair. Which is what we try to do with all benefits programs, is treat everybody the same.
Well, I mean, you're applying, you're allowing for that those, that COVID sick leave, for lack of a better. Well, I mean, you're a plot, you're allowing for that those COVID, that COVID sick leave, for lack of a better term, for everyone. But we're just simply saying that those that have other sick time, they need to use that first, basically.
Well, I mean, that's, it's it's up to to you what we're gonna do.
Because I could see, you know, someone, I mean, one of the things that I, reasons I think it would be a good idea to reinstitute this is even if you have someone who has, say, two days of sick time. When, if they get COVID, we're telling them to stay away for ten days to ten weeks.
And it's not their choice. I mean, they have to stay away.
Correct. Right.
So you have, you have longer term employees who, I mean, I'll just make the case in the other direction. Um, you have an employee right now who has a planned family medical leave event coming up, which is gonna be a long. It will use a lot of time. Um, and she just had COVID, so she has that in her bank to to use, but, you know, it it's really, I'm sh- I'm sure that this employee would feel that's not fair if we're making her use that sick leave when she's gonna need it, um, in the near future.
So we, well.
I guess what I'm saying is I think the most fair way to do it is just extend it to everyone. We manage that just like we do our our regular sick leave to make sure people are accountable.
We do have a, um, you know, currently, without even relating to COVID, you have a policy where a person can exhaust all of their sick leave, exhaust all of their vacation, and then also be negative forty hours in sick leave. So we do have some things, however, a new person is still waiting six months to use vacation. So that's kind of, you know, eliminates them from that process. Then you still have to be reflective of your long term, been here a long time, have, maybe you're looking at someone that has a thousand hours in their sick bank. But they have that because they come to work every day and they're not sick and then now they have COVID and they have to use their eighty hours, but the next person doesn't. So it's kind of, they, that's where they would probably think it's unfair.
But that is not my, that was not my intention on this at all. I want it to be fair and so if you're out with COVID, you got ten extra days, period. If you're out with shoulder surgery, you don't use the COVID bank because it's not COVID. So I didn't want it to be fair to people, you know, we were offering that and now we're not, and it's like, that's not right.
Yeah, I think one of the reasons that we probably should entertain this idea is, you know, the rest of the all the urban areas used this emergency leave because COVID hit those communities early on. It's just now hitting us. Now we're being affected by it. We're talking ten days or fourteen days or what? We're talking ten, ten workdays, ten work itself, two weeks.
Okay. Seventy five hours, basically.
Or eighty if you're, law enforcement.
Um, do you see any need for, um, proof of COVID?
Well, Nick and I were just talking about that. Um, I think, you know, one of the reasons these counties got taken advantage of in two thousand twenty is because it's hard, it's difficult to require that people, I mean, would you feel okay about demanding somebody go get tested? And providing proof of that test or, you know, we're a small community, we know who is.
We're relying on self diagnosis.
Well, I, it's up to you. I mean, we, we, I think we could legally request documentation. We definitely have the right to always after three days, request medical doc, medical certification. But in this case, um, we do have the right, I think, but I don't know if that's where we want to go.
Well, that seems like, we know that there was abuse of these hours, um, throughout the entire state. Um, we didn't see a lot of that here. So what we're, what we're actually talking about is trying to mitigate a problem that we also acknowledge we didn't really have here.
Exactly.
So maybe we just need to trust our employees and just allow ourselves some freedom here when we uh, when we put this time out there and just say, okay, we're gonna give two extra weeks of COVID leave and we're trusting you guys to use this appropriately because.
That's where I'm at.
Okay.
I think we have, but we're all very honest employees in such a small community. I think they'd be kind of fearful of not telling the truth.
Well, that's the thing, it it is a small community, we find out, you know, if there are kids and we'll run into them at the grocery store or.
They take a two week vacation to Hawaii more often than.
No, I, I think, I think we just need to have a healthy trust for the employees too, especially if we're already acknowledging we didn't have that issue here. So, Commissioner Albertson, does that sound agreeable to you?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright then.
So is this, this is a Oregon? Or is this, this is just us as a county saying we will grant ten additional days?
Right, this is just our county.
Okay.
Initially, it was a a federal requirement that you give forty hours, I mean, eighty hours of sick to your employees if they needed it for anything related to COVID. Um, whether it was taking care of a child, whether the schools were closed and they didn't have childcare, so they had to stay home, anything related to COVID. But now that expired at the end of January and what we're looking at now is just extending the sick leave force and then paying them as applicable sick.
But that cost is all on us.
Yep.
So, yeah.
Yeah, and, but when we, you know, when we talk about the cost of sick leave, it's already budgeted for, it's already paid for, so it's not an an additional cost. But we are bearing the cost of that person not being there, you know, and some departments do have to backfill, so there is a cost.
Right, like the jail and so forth, you s- it needs to be managed, so you bring in other people to fill those holes.
Right.
Yeah. Alright.
Okay. Just make a motion.
Yeah, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to, um, extend for ten working days, um, for COVID sick leave.
Okay.
Do we need to address people that have already been out with it, that we need to backfill their sick? Does that help?
Yeah, we, we want to be able to be retroactive.
Okay, hang on one second, I got a motion on the table. Um, do I have a second on that?
Wait, on the motion though, we need a a deadline too. You, you want to extend that through end of the year or through December?
Thirty one. Okay, um.
So why do we need a deadline, Jay?
We can always re-up it.
Yeah, we, we don't want this, I mean, I, I, that's a decent, that's actually a good question. Because I just saw on the news today that we might be dealing with COVID for years to come. It might be part of our lives forever. But I don't know what the situation is gonna be like then. Um, I think.
What if I didn't use mine this year and then next year I get it and I'm like, well, I had ten days bank last year and then I have ten days bank this year. I think it should expire.
I think, but, by setting a deadline, I think by setting a deadline, you're saying we have, we, we're trying to address a problem right now.
Yeah.
And this was a, a serious critical problem.
So have it expire at the end of the year?
And you guys can re-up it for next year, but we don't have that.
Yeah.
We have a current outbreak. We know that our community is dealing with it and, you know, I think that it's gonna be a persistent issue like the flu and, but then it becomes normal. Right now, we just have a, a pretty extreme outbreak here.
So January thirtieth expiration.
Something.
Next year, oh.
Can you protect the reason we, why we can do fiscal year?
Well, I was going to ask that, that was my next question, on whether or not we would do the fiscal year, um, or we would do the, uh.
That makes, that that makes more sense looking at it as a fiscal year as.
As a budgetary issue?
Calendar year.
We could. Thoughts?
Can always re-up it.
Hmm. Yeah.
Alright, so I'll make a motion to extend ten working days COVID, uh, sick leave, December thirty first, twenty one.
Okay. Uh, for a second?
I'll second.
Um, okay, motions been made, seconded. Um, any further discussion or any?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We didn't address the retroactive.
Yeah.
I was, I was gonna discuss that.
So, I guess you would be, we would say, we're, we want to extend the leave that, that was, the federal leave, we want to extend it as a county through, you know, from that time through December twenty, twenty twenty one.
But it's not that in the leave anymore.
No, it's our, yeah, we want to extend that.
The program.
That program, but it will, yeah, will be at our cost.
Well, the federal program was at our cost also. It just was demanded by them that we do it.
Yes, it was.
But if we continue that program, there are, you know, restrictions and stipulations and things that would give us some rights if we had a situation we wanted to manage. Does that make sense?
Commissioner Albertson, I think December thirty first is a good date. Um, I just wanna, since we're in discussion, it also leaves us a gap where we would, where we'd have a January meeting. Uh, where we wouldn't have that coverage. Do you feel like if we amended that date to, uh, well, the first meeting date would be January fourth of twenty twenty two, or do you wanna?
As so stated.
Okay.
Mended.
That way we don't have a gap.
Yeah, okay, so January, stable this or what? Twenty twenty two, okay.
So just to, so I'm straight, um, I apologize. Um, so there's three or four employees that I'm thinking of right now that have used that in the last month. Are we going back that far? Are we going back all the way?
We need to go back all the way.
Back all the way if we're not extended.
Alright, I'm just trying to get through my own mind.
Very many situations going back, you know.
Yeah, but there's a handful of them, so.
Any of ten is there?
Yeah, make correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright, that's a good call. Melanie, do we have a good motion? Do we have, what do we got?
I will make it a good motion. But I need a second.
A second to the amended?
I believe so.
Good, yeah, alright, motion been made and seconded. Um, any further discussion?
I'll, I'll second.
Um, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Albertson, uh, you made a motion.
I said aye.
Yeah, okay, alright, sounds good. Alright, motion carries.
Thank you guys. Thank you.
Alright, so next up, Res, let's go back actually and we'll just finish up. Um, Bota. So I'm currently on, uh, the Board of Property Tax Appeals with Deanna Walls and Don Lasley, uh, again for this year. Um, that needs to be approved by the board, that these are the, um, these are the people on the committee.
I'll make a motion to approve the recommendation to reappoint the following members to the Board of Property Tax Appeals, James Williams, Deanna Walls, and Don Lasley.
Second.
Motion been made, seconded. Um, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. I was gonna give it a a, but I don't know. I didn't figure I'm getting out of it. Um, so, next up, resolution, uh, twenty twenty one oh five C, as Christians Valley EMS, um, district. Do we have to read this resolution? Thank you, good.
So I did make a minor change. It's not, I didn't print that. The new date, just to navigate our rotation, is going to be January fifth, so that's our first regular session meeting, because then we don't have to turn around and go back the next meeting up there. And I ran this by Stacy and she said, that's fine, that gives her enough time to publish the ballot title.
Okay, so.
So December, I think I said December fifteenth on your resolution, that'll now be January fifth
Okay.
and we'll have our hearing up there instead of here.
Sweet down Paisley.
Okay.
Yeah, because then that throws off Paisley and then I don't want to shortchange them and not go there because we usually have decent participation at Paisley. Um.
So we're looking at November second and January fifth.
Are we looking at November second or third?
Second.
Third.
Okay.
We have the third.
So, on, we'll have to change that, that on here too because it's.
Already, yeah.
Okay, you did change the November second.
The ones you guys are gonna sign, I have it, correct.
Okay, gotcha, because I did have that highlighted, I wanted to double check on that because you had mentioned we wanted to have a, have our meeting up in Christians Valley. And does that throw off anything else with um, the first hearing on the one page? It says November seventeenth.
Mm-hmm, that's A of C. So we can't, we're just starting it a little early, which is fine.
Yeah. Okay.
Because you guys won't be available.
Yep. Okay, just double checking. Sounds good. And that December date, of course, changes as well.
Yes. You have to have the second hearing twenty to fifty days after the initial hearing.
Right.
Um, so it's fine and that still gives Stacy time to do the ballot title work.
Perfect.
Well, the ballot title is already done from last hearing.
Mm-hmm.
She just has to reissue it for public comment.
Gotcha. I'm just going through that process again. Good deal, um.
And also I think we should point out, this is an initiative from the proposed taxing district, and they provided signatures and this is why you guys are putting it forward.
So, January, what was that date again? Fifth, the fifth? Okay. And the recruitment of the board candidates, everything else, you think that can be done in that January as well, after that second meeting?
That's on them.
That's on them, yeah. Well, so the clerk doesn't have anything to do with that, that's all on them, okay?
Mm-hmm.
But you have to file just like any other.
Mm-hmm.
Person.
Right. Okay. And so, for the record, um, this is, uh, this is for the EMS district in Christians Valley, um, and to form, uh, the district to serve the North Lake County and, uh, just reading here. Yeah, no, this is, this is. I didn't always, I always thought this was funny that this district, it goes over, doesn't quite go to the end of, um, the little subdivision, um, west of town. It's, uh, doesn't quite make, even make it to Ivy. But.
It'll be a discussion point.
Yeah. But it goes way. But it goes way, way out there um to the west. It's interesting. Okay. Alright, um I'll take, I'll entertain a motion on the resolution.
I'll make the motion to uh approve resolution twenty twenty one dash zero five C in the matter of the commissioners have received a request from the residents of Northlake County for the formation of an emergency medical services taxation district for the proposed area as presented.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded, any further discussion?
Just that the public hearings will be on November second of twenty twenty one and January fifth of twenty twenty two. Also, um last page of the thing says that they received a hundred and ninety five ballot signatures of a hundred and sixty required.
Alright.
Eric, can you second that last part again?
Uh Stacy Genie received a hundred and ninety five official signatures and a hundred and sixty were required, so they exceeded the.
Fifteen percent.
The minimum fifteen percent of registered voters in the, in that proposed district.
Alright. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 OLCC application up next. And this is for?
The Ranch Inn.
Yeah, the Ranch Inn in Kristen Valley.
They hope to be operational January first.
Mm-hmm. Good. Sounds good. Where is the Ranch Inn? It's um.
New business.
Yeah, new business, it's the old building, when you, if you're coming in on, from eleven mile corner into Kristen Valley, it's there on your left, near the first Maple Circle Road, um right across from uh uh Char Shumway's Real Estate uh office. And uh anyway, it's been closed for a while, but it's under new ownership. I thought it was interesting, they've got um video lottery machines under the entertainment, live music, all sorts of things. Alright, um I'll entertain a motion on the OLCC license application.
Make a motion to approve the Oregon liquor license, OLCC license with the business of.
Ranch Inn.
Ranch Inn. As presented.
Again.
Motion been made and seconded, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries. Um Lake County Local Contract Review Board rules. Any wanna give us a?
Mm-hmm.
Group overview of this. This is.
So Anne and I have been chatting a little bit about the new thresholds in this state. Um a new capital purchase is ten thousand dollars, and so um for you, up to ten, the new threat threshold by the state is ten thousand dollars for three quotes. Anything below you can do comparative quoting. Um and then the new RFP threshold is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And so you don't have to do a formal RFP process until that amount. And so we have that updated in um in our contract rules for you guys to consider.
Okay. So those are the only two changes that have really been made to this document?
Just the announce, yeah. The emergency board or the emergency contractor report stuff is the same, it's still fifty thousand dollars. Um I'm trying to think, I think that's the only thing, it's just the announce.
Just those two amounts, okay. Alright.
Right now we have it at five seventy-five.
Right. And but though the state rules changed this last legislative session and bumped that up to ten thousand statewide, which I think will really help
Mm-hmm.
just uh.
Well, an RFP is very cumbersome, so.
Right, takes a lot of time and it's, this way it get, makes us a little bit more nimble. We can um I know we had some work on the Honey Creek Bridge uh with the road department just recently, and that was going to be just over maybe five thousand. And uh the concern was that we have to go out for a contractor bid, that we have to go through that whole process just because it's just over five thousand dollars, just to do a little bit of work on the under part of the bridge. And uh Kevin and I were talking and look, because the state upped this to ten thousand, it made it a lot easier for Kevin to just go in, get the work done, and uh not have to go through the whole process of contract for bid. So this is great, and puts us in alignment with the rest of the state. Alright, um I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve Lake County Local Contract Review Board rules as presented.
Again.
Motion's been made and seconded. Uh all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Um.
Just a question of clarification.
Sure.
Is that for, say, vehicle repair as well?
Yeah.
Okay, so we don't have to seek three bits for vehicle repair. Reason I ask is um our work group had hit a deer this morning, unavoidable, and it's center punched it, so it's
Ooh.
Was it one corner or the other corner?
Well, you still have to do like some comparative, but you don't have to do like the formal written thing, you can call and say, hey, this happened, can I get this quote? You don't have to present it to the board.
Okay.
Right.
But you still should do your due diligence to make sure.
And you still have to have take a trail and all that.
Yeah.
I intend to do that, I just wanted to make sure.
Right. Mm-hmm.
That is accurate, okay, thank you.
Yep. That'll be the question. Um HRTG grant agreement, Melanie?
I am pleased to say that our HRTG was fully funded this year. We had a small reduction last year because of COVID and the uncertainty of lottery dollars coming in, so um it's great news, we're back at forty-five thousand, which we can definitely use, um and we passed that through to Lake County Senior Center for veteran services to get to medical appointments.
Question on that, how that just seems like a really complicated process when you, with the because you have so many different people on those buses and everything when they're trying to get to, how do you guys differentiate that? Um.
We have a new software that we're using, that makes it much easier, and then each person has a cost allocation per ride. Some rides, um you're not allowed to duplicate passengers, so maybe a hundred percent of the cost, but
Right.
some are eligible to share rides and stuff, it just depends on the circumstances, but
Gotcha.
it's very slick, we have dead ha, dead time included, um mileage, it's, it's incredible.
Yeah.
Kevin Chambers is very smart.
Yeah, so that's the software that Kevin Chambers has been working on and helping us work through.
Right sheet, mm-hmm.
Okay. Gotcha, okay.
It accounts for each person.
That's really awesome.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, um I'll entertain a motion.
I make the motion to approve uh the HRTG grant that was awarded to Lake County for veterans transportation funding through the ODVA Highly Rural Transportation Grant.
Motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion?
The grant amount was forty-five thousand dollars.
Perfect. Um all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Um computer purchases.
So, um okay, I'm sorry, I know it's eighteen thousand, but so we have a rotation program. Um I decided instead of desktops, it was best to go with um
Laptops.
Laptops, just because sometimes as of late, we really need to be able, the flexibility to work at home. So, um the total amount is eighteen thousand two hundred fifty-eight dollars for the new computers, and that includes some of the people didn't already have them, so um monitors and things like that to give them.
Okay.
But.
There was, there was some uh complaints from a couple of the police officers on some of the laptops that we had had prior, that some of the keyboards or at least the keys on the keyboards were kind of cheap, cheaply made. Do, is, are these the same or are we?
These are not the GTAC computers.
These are not the GTAC computers, these are.
No, we don't buy those for those folks, but this is just um.
These are general.
General ones.
Use, okay, alright. So these aren't going to be used for law enforcement or any of that, this is just for our offices here in the.
Mm-hmm, you can see on there, there's one for the DA, um he needs more capacity, that one's a little bit more, um and then so the OptiFlex ones are just the basic ones that most people have, and then there are three that have a little bit more advanced RAM and things, um
Okay.
but no GTACs, we just bought everyone a new GTAC.
Right.
So we're not, not yet.
It may have been the GTAC computers that they were, that they were complaining about as far as the keyboards just being kind of ranky-dink, but.
That's what they wanted.
Yeah.
And they were expensive, so.
Yeah.
But.
I remember that.
We need to start having that budget for replacements.
Mm-hmm, yes, if the keyboards are already falling apart or keys falling off or things like that, it would be good to just make sure that that's budgeting for going forward. Make sure that we can get some new ones and hopefully some even better ones if we have to. Makes sense in the long run.
So Melanie, uh you still have a OptiFlex in this recommendation?
And that, those are laptops still.
It says desktops.
Oh, well then I don't mean that.
Good catch, very tough.
Good catch, sorry, I don't want those.
Okay.
I will amend that, or I will have them amend that, yeah, because that was a part of our discussion.
Okay.
They're just the basic, um best, or laptops.
Oh, they're the Dell attitude laptops.
Yeah, I think that's our standard issue. Very rarely do we buy more expensive models, we try to be as basic as we can.
Is that still going to be eighty-nine hundred per computer if it's the laptops versus the desktops?
I'll need to talk to him about that, I don't think so. So I'll, I will table this until tomorrow and if that's alright with you guys and.
Okay. Sure. Perfect.
Clear that up.
Okay. Um we'll go down to El, Lake County uh Senior Center Agreement?
So this is for our contract provide services. Um after our review, our federal review, there wasn't language in there for um purchase thresholds, and so we, I had to add some of that language in here and in the agreement.
Okay.
And uh one information, I see the Paisley Senior Center is also a signature on this.
Well, I might as screw that one up too then.
Sorry.
Really, really strong work these days, huh?
Yesterday was a Monday.
Today's a Monday.
Today's a Monday.
So the, the amounts and everything have not changed, but I will get the name on that one cleaned up, I copied and pasted, so.
Sure, yeah, and it would just be Lake County Senior Citizens Association.
Right. Mm-hmm.
Yeah. And that's all, all that language is in there, it's just the Paisleys in there extra, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, um but other than that, it looks good. It's a good catch.
And this is the same thing for Inter Court Family Center?
Will be revising that one too.
No, I think okay on that one.
Okay.
Looks like.
Okay.
Has it, has these, have these prices changed much over the years?
Well, that just depends on what's allocated through FTA and ODOT.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Okay, so and that's, that's what's impacting the uh, the change in these numbers largely, is the dollar, the pass through dollars or?
No, I had to put in new language for FTA procurement after our federal review.
Okay.
And so they were displeased that we did not have that same rule guideline in the contract that we follow.
Okay.
For procurements. The amounts should be the same as initially you proposed. The funding has not changed.
Okay. Is this on, is the whole contract on biennium?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I will entertain a motion on this. Okay.
Make the motion to approve the Provider Services Agreement for services provided in Lake County, Oregon, for the twenty-one twenty-three biennium for the amount of sixty-seven thousand one hundred thirty-seven dollars. That's a sufficient.
Good. Is that a second?
Yeah.
Alright, uh motion's been made and seconded. Um any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Um next up, Inter Court Family Center, Paisley, um what we just did. Yeah, um. Is that what we just approved? It's a little bit different for the Inter Court.
Mm-hmm.
It's got um.
Oh, so I have the old number bit.
Oh, which one?
You have. Well, I have the, is this for sixty-seven thousand or just?
Oh, that, that one's this one's for, this is the Inter Court Family Center.
Basically similar to.
So fifty-six thousand nine hundred thirty-seven dollars for fifty-three ten funding.
Right.
Okay, okay. For this one.
Yeah.
It's one we just approved.
Yeah, and we've already.
So I knew the wrong amount.
Oh.
Yeah. That's okay, but we've already approved these agreements, we're just demanding to include the new, new language.
Gotcha.
Alright, so this one there is the Inter Court, it helps out, Paisley Inter Court Family Center
Mm-hmm.
for the amount of sixty-seven one thirty-seven. Previous one was three fifty-six nine thirty-seven.
Sorry.
I'll make the motion to uh approve the Provider Services Agreement for Lake County, Oregon, for the twenty-one twenty-three biennium between Paisley Inter Court Family Center and Lake County for the amount of sixty-seven thousand dollars one hundred thirty-seven.
Again.
Motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries.
So this next agreement is for professional services, we receive a stiff discretionary grant and for the rehab of the um Lake County Senior Citizens um transportation area. Lake County Senior Citizens um transportation area. It's for the parking lot insecurity.
Okay.
So this is just a pass through um agreement to reimburse them up to um the amount oh goodness, sorry. Fifty eight thousand three hundred twenty five dollars is the reimbursable amount. But it says it has language like they have to provide the man the reasonable procurement standards that we require. It ha um holds us um if they become involved with any kind of litigation, it keeps us out of it um test up for arbitration and then it has the grant agreement, uh project description, yeah, timeframe.
So this is this also includes the cardboard installation.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Alright. I'll entertain a motion.
Make the motion to approve the professional services agreement between Lake County and the Lake County Senior Citizens Center. Um as presented.
Yeah, there you go. Yeah.
It's one theory.
The scope of work, branch, and so forth. Alright, uh do I have a second? I'm not hearing anything, Mark. But I'll second it. Motion's made and seconded, um all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, motion carries. I'm not hearing anything, Mark, so if you're, I don't know if your mic went out, it says that you're unmuted.
No, I had a run with the bathroom, my apologies.
Oh, okay, worries. Um next up is uh an amendment uh to contract with the Portland State University.
So this took a little longer than we expected to get this survey going for the Community Development Block, right? The state approved it last week, so we hope to have it finished soon, but the date changes a little to the end of January, um no fiscal change.
Okay. Okay, I actually got an email with they they asked me to do a docu-sign on this and I had just sent the lady a response back real quick and just said, hey, give me a call, it was kind of because I had seen the dates change on this and I just hadn't had a chance to get back and talk to you about it, but that's kind of what I figured it was. Alright, um so is this so so with that change, they're not anticipating this to really be done until mid time next year? Potentially.
We'll see.
Yeah, okay. I'll entertain a motion on the uh uh contract with Portland State University.
So hold on just a minute.
Sure.
So um I'm having a little bit of an issue with this because if I remember right, the reason why we picked Portland State was because they could get it soon done sooner
Mm-hmm.
than waiting a year and um.
Yeah. That was my thoughts.
Is that correct, Melanie?
Yep, it is correct, but um we've had several hurdles getting things approved with the state because you know a lot of them are working from home and so there's some significant downtime I think would be fair to say and so they would review a something, make a change and it was just a time-consuming process. Um they were hoping to have these surveys out beginning of the summer and so now we're hoping next week, whoa, there's they planned to send them out this week now that we got the Business Oregon approval, but it it has taken more time than we thought or hoped for.
Yeah.
We were hoping to do the application that's due in a couple days, but so we'll shoot for the next application date.
And I don't have anything else.
Okay, I I understand we we were really hoping that this was gonna be done by now, that's why we went with these guys, that was kind of my thoughts, but.
So Business Oregon has proposed a Clean Drinking Water Act funding, just an update, um and I think the Christians Valley Water District is working on getting that agreement going, I know they were approved for it um and then Business Oregon is hosting a Water District Users Meeting to just discuss different funding options. Uh a lot of those funding options have a match, so they might ask you guys to help with a match for some of those for the grants. Um just a heads up, I don't know what they'll determine, but they're they're in great need.
Uh-huh, yeah, they are. But again, like this before us right now, the this uh contract with Portland State University, this also impacts the library's ability to go out for for uh for grants as well. Because they were doing a study on that.
Mm-hmm.
The library district as well also.
Mm-hmm.
Okeydoke, um.
We have a whole lot of
No.
I don't wanna start over, but
Mm-hmm.
Hopefully uh this will come quick, we can get back on the grant.
Yeah.
Charge first the next year.
It's unfortunate, but just stay the course. Alright, um I'll entertain a motion.
Make the motion to approve Amendment One to Contract Number nine two nine three eight four buying between Portland State University and Lake County as presented.
Okay. Motion made, seconded, uh any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Um next up, Warner Valley RFP, a pass-through vehicle purchase. Um Barry, you were doing some work on this with John O'Keefe. Um yeah, and I know that there's there's two items here.
This documentation present.
No, this is I I think this documentation is actually for the the second um item on here, which is a donation request.
Yeah, so there's two things, they're hoping that they can use their ARPA funding but have us do the procurement and then reimburse us afterward.
Once they get, once the dollars pass through High Desert and to them, and then they just reimburse us.
Mm-hmm. So they're looking to uh purchase two chassis uh for some for two type six engines for next season, expire season. And uh Mr. O'Keefe would like to be proactive, uh get those orders in now due to the difficulties of vehicles being uh built at this point and the chip problem that is ongoing and so uh he has come to us since they have not received the ARPA funding yet and asked if we would uh help fund these two chassis. And then when they do receive their funding, which could be the end of this calendar year uh then that would return and pay us back, right? So we are taking some risk. Uh he's anticipating it being a total of about a hundred ten thousand dollars for the two chassis and but that's a guess right now at this point, we're gonna look for three bids if we approve today and get it going.
Okay, so we would also be looking at the vehicle purchase going through the county. Yeah, yeah, straight up, okay.
But we don't pay for them until they arrive, so
Until they are here.
It's going to be quite some kind, likely they'll get their money and there won't be any
We may we may be
Flush.
Flush and never need it, but uh in order for them to get a request in they have to have the funding.
Okay. Alright.
Request for purchase, I guess.
Consensus.
Um yes, uh the only thing is I because this is mainly just a form letter from um
That's not for this.
Yeah, this is for this is for a donation request, uh if we could get something in writing from John uh from uh Warner Valley just kind of saying, you know, spelling out kind of a a little bit more of a guarantee that there will be um you know, that reimbursement taking place, it would probably be good, but I can I'm I'm good with consensus on this.
Would you like an MOU or is that what you're looking for?
Well, I I'm not necessarily, it doesn't have to be an MOU, we just need something in writing.
I have email, she likes them.
You do have emails, chains and everything else, so
Mm-hmm.
Okay, as long as it's adequate, um and that uh you know, that it spells out exactly what the procedure of the process is going to be. Um that way we have something to go off of. Um Fisher Alveson, anything from you, thoughts?
I don't know, I'm with you guys.
Okay. Alright, consensus.
So the next one I received in the mail and John said if we purchase these vehicles for us, he'll forget about this part. So we did, we did get this solicitation, they're asking for a donation, we do have county land that we held up from the land sale
Right.
that are sage grouse habitat, so it's in a protection area, this is the first one that I've received from them, um but I'm presenting it as part of our process.
Yeah.
This has never been requested before.
Not to my knowledge.
Yeah, not not by any of the RFPAs. And and we have county land in both those RFPAs that extent that are over a hundred acres typically because we are holding it back for that sage grouse habitat. And um we do have a lot in the Warner Valley area. Um little tiny chunks that are out in the middle of nowhere that honestly just don't, they're not suitable, you can't build houses, you'll never get approved for building a home and beyond, but um we have a significant amount of acreage out there, so um but we this has never been requested by the other RFPAs uh which I'm not sure yet, but if we get vehicles and he says that this request goes away, I'm good with that. Unless you guys are just thinking proactively, we wanna entertain something like that for the fire protection that they're providing on the lands that we own out there.
I would be in favor of tabling this until we get to the first of the year.
Sounds good.
And see where they're at with uh ARPA funding.
Okay. Agree.
I know it's a minimal now, but uh
Yeah.
we'll know more later in a few months.
Yeah. Um so I just realized that we've been making you sit here the whole time, Jake, just to get to your stuff, I should have
I'm here with that.
I should have jumped down the list, these weren't time.
No, I had I had court, I was supposed to bat court this morning, but uh I addressed it without
Oh, okay.
without my me being needed, so
Okay.
I asked Melanie to put me last, just so I could make sure I addressed court.
Gotcha, well the next the first thing is uh the Climate Lake uh Community Action Lake County.
Melanie, can I see what I can maybe decide.
Mm-hmm, yeah, it's not here.
Um
There's a criminal justice one and um those six twenty twos.
So for the community action, we entered into an agreement with them several years ago, um what we do is we provide firewood for their heating program, um and um for our work on that they they reimburse us a hundred point five dollars per quart of wood, uh we get a ten dollar stack, we can get a dollar outside of, ten dollar trouble outside of uh thank you, everybody who's empowered to report whether or in this program um if they request that, they have the opportunity to, they have the choice between wood, electric, or oil. Um so this year we're a little um short on firewood because of fire season, um went to create correction facility, their crews were on fires
Right.
and weren't splitting wood, um and they they do have a stack of wood rounds out there, um so because they were still involved with the um group of people, our our crew has been going out picking up rounds out of the person taking down their yard and spudding and stacking, so we have some left available. So people remember when we started our invoices, and so this contract is just a continuation of all we've handled in um nothing's changed, we have an extension date, they're asking for another year.
Sounds good, and this is just year to year?
Uh-huh.
This is just year to year, you know? Okay. Sounds good.
So that'd be
Yep, um
Need that ATS and signature and the name of the ATS is just like and then the rest of that information is yours.
Need to reach out to class, I haven't talked to them for a while. Um do we wanna hold off on taking action on a few things because we're down to basically one thing for action tomorrow? Yeah, that's what happened, something to just kind of take up a little bit of space tomorrow.
Well, I don't ever know if I'm gonna be there tomorrow.
You better be. Yeah, tomorrow's a fun day, especially in the afternoon. Um okay. I'm good with this though. Obviously.
Just a good motion or a consensus?
I think it needs a mo uh it needs a motion. Because it is a, it is an agreement, yeah.
True.
If you wanna act on today, it's perfectly fine with me.
I'd like to get it over with and then if we wouldn't have anything else.
Okay, um
Yeah. We've got enough to do tomorrow.
Mm-hmm. Alright, um I'll entertain a motion then.
Barry, you wanna make the motion, please? Yeah. Uh I'll make the motion to uh continue the agreement to extend with the Oregon Low Income Energy Assistant Agreement between Lake County and Climate Lake CAS as presented.
Okay.
Second.
Uh motion's been made and seconded, any additional discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Aye, motion carries, next up is Oregon Criminal Justice Commission and Lake County.
Yes, the Oregon Criminal Justice Commission has awarded Lake County um monies to be used for the Lake County Food and Court Program. Um it comes from the Oregon's Special Court Grant. Um this was a competitive grant process, um and funding is in favor of support, specialty courts meet Oregon special court standards. Lake County, we were awarded I don't exactly know what that score was, about a hundred and or two hundred and thirty thousand, two hundred and twenty thousand and some change for two years, um for Um for Lake County to use for our program exclusively is a hundred eighty seven thousand eight hundred dollars. Remaining thirty two thousand four hundred ninety six um will be a contract between the community uh Oregon Criminal Justice Commission, Oregon Judicial Department, because we pay for um I think twenty five percent of an FDV upstairs in the court, court's office. Um and what that position does is assist us with our specialty court management system and does all the um recording of our court hearings and all the data information or data um entry. For our program. So again, this is a hundred eighty seven thousand eight hundred dollars for biennial twenty twenty one through twenty twenty three. Uh ninety three thousand nine hundred fiscal year, fiscal year for Lake County for our program and what that pays for um. There it is, uh page, page three of your um packet. We have a hundred eleven thousand one hundred twenty dollars for personnel that pays for half of uh Marjorie Court P L. P L's position, so we have a halftime um portion in that grant. Our contracted personnel services is with uh Lake District Hospital for uh Wellness Center and Recovery Center participation in court. Nine hundred dollars for drug testing, medical needs to study six thousand for two years and that's for our medical assisted treatment contract with Warner Warner Valley Medical Clinic.
Yeah.
Doctor Graham and Lisa K Hill.
Lisa K Hill, yeah.
Part of our program. Training and travel is fifteen thousand five hundred and that's for national conference travel. Uh and then we have some indirect cost of four thousand two hundred eighty to us. And then O J D budget is for personnel, which is thirty two thousand four hundred ninety six dollars.
Okay.
This last biennial, we had a contract with O J D. It worked, it worked perfectly, unfortunately, there's thirty six counties, um and not everybody was able to get a contract agreed upon or entered with O J D, so Criminal Justice Commission decided to take it upon themselves to make sure that happens this year, this next biennial, so. That contract will, we won't have to worry about exchanging monies with O J D, um Criminal Justice Commission is handling all that. That's just part of our grant.
Sounds good.
Alright. And we do have another grant that uh is being um I believe it was reviewed yesterday. This is our justice reinvestment grant that also pays for our specialty court and drug court program. Um but a lot of money and we haven't got a proof for that yet, they just had it granted yesterday, I believe, so. We'll be getting some information on that.
Any uh. Thoughts? Uh looks good to me, I'll entertain a motion on this.
I'll make the motion to approve the Oregon Criminal Justice Commission grant that has been awarded to Lake County in the amount of a hundred eighty seven thousand dollars in eight, a hundred eighty seven thousand eight hundred dollars for the biennial twenty twenty one through twenty twenty three and specifically ninety three thousand nine hundred dollars for this fiscal year as presented.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion?
A little bit.
Yeah.
Not completely off topic, but um. Jake, you, a few years ago, a couple of years ago, you got that grant for Deputy D A um to the drug court also, correct?
Which one?
Deputy D A.
The Deputy D A.
Yes, I, I did write that.
It was under J R I, I think.
J R I.
Wasn't it?
It, it was under Justice Reinvestment Supplemental Grant Funding. Is, is there any more of that coming or do you see any of that, the future that we can apply for, for Deputy D A? There is supplemental grant funding and when we wrote that, um I uh had met, had a conversation with the, um at the time, the executive director of Criminal Justice Commission, Michael Schmidt, he is now the district attorney of Oldham County. At any rate, our conversation um was pretty short-lived as he asked if I, if we had intentions of re- rewriting that grant and asking for continuation and I said, of course we would. And he unofficially informed me that it's probably not worth our while to do so because um we weren't meeting the needs. We weren't doing what we said we were gonna do and obviously reducing um our prison use and at the time our district attorney um um really wasn't interested. We, we had some support to get the money and then we lost some support, so um we had, we haven't requested that in some time. And I don't, I don't know that we would be eligible for that today.
Because of.
Because of convictions.
Uh. It comes with conditions of reducing prison, re- reducing prison use or um and some public departures and some various things. And um we, why haven't, unable to do that. Not, not, not anybody's fault, it's just the nature of the crime that's happening and the prison sentencing that we're being imposed.
Right. Right, I mean, some crimes are mandatory sentencing.
Exactly. Well, these, these grants specifically are drug, property and driving charges. Um drug possession um pretty much gone away, um and you have to have substantial quantity. I don't know that we would meet that criteria. It's worth looking into, um worth having conversations for, but the supplemental grant funding approval process or grant um has already closed, it's already been openly closed for this biennial. So it's something to look forward to, maybe in twenty three.
Are you available tomorrow for discussion about Deputy D A?
Aye. Thank you. Good.
We have another option too for grant, upcoming grant. We missed this window, but it's not VOKA, but it's the big women, women crimes, whatever the acronym is.
There's VOKA and blah blah, violence against women's.
Yeah, that one, mm-hmm.
There's a couple of them, I'm still.
Yeah, so that one will go to the district attorney's office if they're interested.
Thank you, I will read your.
Okay. Okay.
Is that a timed item?
Uh yeah, actually, actually I was going to ask if we can move that to be used in first time guide.
No.
What time until nine?
We can't do that at ten?
Well, that's a public comment is, and then we have a hearing at ten fifteen.
Time's early. Yeah, but we don't really have much to take up that space because we've been trying to take care of some of the business today. So I was thinking if we moved that up to ten o'clock, um public comment would open, um. I don't anticipate a huge amount of public comment tomorrow.
Was it the D A's office available at ten thirty?
There, yeah.
Was that only one that you were available?
Well, that's one, yeah, and then I am in, part expecting some public comment.
Okay.
From the North Lake um EMS folks.
Gotcha.
So ten thirty?
Okay, we'll leave it at ten thirty.
I don't, I don't know if they'll show up, but they did express that they had several people interested in making public comment about mandatory vaccinations.
Okay.
I'll read for that.
Sounds good.
Too efficient.
Yeah, if, if they do, if they want, yeah, we could, we can take a recess totally.
We might take a recess. Sorry.
So what's the plan?
Uh tomorrow, we will be having a Deputy D A discussion at ten thirty. Uh we have an ordinance hearing uh fifteen minutes prior to that uh for the clerk's office. Um that's at ten fifteen, um and there's really no other timed items except for one P M, we have our uh Blue Arm and Goal Exception Hearing. And there's not much to fill in those gaps as far as untimed items. Other than a, a computer purchase and whatever else we might wanna discuss tomorrow. So Deputy D A is uh tomorrow, um.
I'll read your slide.
We still have a motion on the table for um the Oregon Criminal Justice Commission Lake County Agreement, um. Uh. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, motion carries.
I apologize, I just didn't want, wanna forget what I was.
Yeah, no worries at all, that's fine, um.
If, if something does come up, Jake, make sure you let us know so we can figure something out there.
Robert. Uh lastly, Jake, uh discussion on Senate Bill six twenty.
Yes.
Um on the repeal of obligation of persons on supervision pay fees.
Yes, this last legislative session, um the um public safety ways and means were approached by representatives Judy and Solomon and Janelle Byon as well as senators Chris Gorsak and Walt Prozansky about doing away with our supervision fee portion. So su, being on parole probation or local control supervision, that was bad, bad behavior play type thing. Um and we annually collected anywhere um between twelve and, I'd say between fourteen and twenty one thousand dollars in past supervision fees. Um. Other counties obviously collect more based on their populations and however much they charge, we've always charged thirty five dollars. Um some counties charge, charge upwards of fifty dollars a month. Nevertheless, this last legislative session, um the represent, the legislature um created Senate Bill six twenty, which would do away with the collection of supervision fees and supervision fees only. Currently we collect um fees for urinalis testing, child permit fees, interstate compact fees and polygraph fees. Um we're able to continue to collect those, it was the supervision fees. An idea behind this is some counties, Lake County, we, I had never believed in this, we've never done it. If someone owed supervision fees that were accrued over the course of their supervision, certain counties would not allow them probation to expire um until all their fees were paid full. Well, every month they couldn't pay, there was that added fee every month, so it's like they could never were able to get ahead and get off supervision. Lake County, we, if once their expiration date hit, if all their court fines and fees were paid off, we didn't hold on to them to collect supervision fees, that's nothing I would ever do. Um. Nevertheless, the legislature took a look at this and they um asked Senate, Senate Bill six twenty, which does away with the collection of supervision fees, passing supervision fees and moving forward current supervision fees. So um understanding of the loss of revenue to county statewide, they um added some monies to the bill and that is ten million dollars statewide. Our um our allocation is thirty four thousand dollars for two years, so seventeen thousand dollars a year, which is about average of what we collected over time. Some years were better than others, some years were worse than others. So we would, we would be um obtaining seventeen thousand dollars a fiscal year, which we use towards a lot of the variety of things um in our office as far as revenue. So um we've, we talked about it as a group, our association and community corrections directors and we agreed October first, we would no longer be collecting supervision fees or billing for supervision fees. Um Lake County, we took that a step further, um September, I believe it was September fifteenth was our end dates and we're not collecting more fees or one backwards for supervision fees. Um we just stopped. However, if they wanted to come in and pay supervision fees and they owed some back fees for urine testing or oral swab testing, um child permit fees or polygraph fees, we would take that and apply it that way.
Yep.
Um otherwise, we aren't collecting any fees. So with that, and that idea behind that was the Senate Bill six twenty took effect July first of twenty twenty one and runs through um this next fiscal year or this next biennial, June thirtieth of twenty twenty three. So for collecting fees through January first is when um the bill is supposed to take effect and they're paying this for the biennial, it's kind of double dipped.
Yeah.
So Department of Corrections take the stance of if you're collecting fees, past or present, we're gonna, we're gonna withhold some of that money from you. Um because we're not gonna let you double dip. So there are, there are a few, maybe eight to ten, maybe eight to twelve clients that are current on the supervision fees that paid for July and August and maybe September, so we may be reimbursing them some money at two hundred and five bucks that they paid for three months and they were current on all of, all of the fees. So we're looking at that after the first year, um once things settle down and we're able to do that. So um and I I've been involved in community corrections since nineteen ninety four and we've been collecting statewide, we've been collecting supervision fees. I saw going with two ways that we're, at some point in time, we're gonna charge a hundred dollars a month or at some point in time, supervision fees are just gonna go away. And there we go, this day is when everything's happening, um you have the sensitivity factor in sale. Um insensitive to everything. This came out then.
Yeah, personally, Senator Frederick carrying this bill through and championing it.
I mean, do I agree with it or disagree with it?
I mean, the double dipping, dipping factor, I think, maybe could be fixed, but at the same time, it's.
They're, they're funding us for, some counties collect doubleers of three, four hundred thousand dollars a year.
Yeah.
And their allocation from the ten million isn't near that.
No.
So some counties are frustrated with that, that it's gonna reduce some programming for Lake County, seventeen thousand dollars is a hybrid.
Yeah.
Where I have no.
Almost a wash, yeah.
Yeah, it's a wash, I have no complaints, something's better than nothing and we can figure things out.
Yep. Yeah, we'll, we'll make, we'll be tight.
A lot of things work, so we will continue to do something. So um we're gonna have this more for discussion purposes, Commissioner Sean Verda reached out and asked us.
Yep.
The backstory, um and some discussion, so um. There I am.
Thank you.
If you have any questions, um I'm here. They're gonna, they're gonna readdress some things in the legislative session. Um as outlined in their letter to us, to our association, um dated September second. They're gonna make some changes and may have a retro.
Is this the legislature that, that stated this or is this coming from the Multnomah uh district attorney office?
No, this is legislature.
Okay.
This is all scripty legislature, we did this. Um and there might have been some counties that were maybe pushing for it.
Oh, I know the Multnomah County, they were, it was, they, it, this bill was at their request.
When COVID, when COVID hit, Multnomah County just stopped going for fees altogether.
Yeah.
Um the one, and, and I mean, good for Multnomah County, they, their state budget, their grant made dollars um that we, this community corrections here in Lake County, we generate zero, we ask for zero general fund dollars. Um Multnomah County, it's about sixty forty, forty percent of their um entire community correction budget is state funded, sixty percent is general fund. So Multnomah County helps offset a lot of their costs, right, sixty percent, so. If they were to stop going for fees, they may be able to go back to the county and say, hey, this will be hit, can you help us out? The ten million, it really isn't giving them the amount of money that they.
Right.
They would collect a year, so I'm assuming that piece of that fell coming from the.
Gotcha, yeah.
Two hundred five dollars, so. We're maybe in it work and we'll continue to make things work with our given dollars.
Thank you, Jake, for the update.
That helps me learn a little bit more, but appreciate it, yeah, no problem, anytime. Um just one last little update, if I may.
Sure.
As I mentioned earlier, our crew ran into deer this morning, um this is bottom of a fisk out there near uh Cale's place. Um there's some pretty significant damage, um we had to go to the halls and um I'll be sick in three bits from various body shops in town, but I can get that fixed. So yeah, Ken do it by himself, so you know, there were no injuries. I don't know if the um airbag deployed or not. I haven't heard that yet, but, uh.
Has it been towed yet or is it still out there?
I'll tow it then, this morning.
Okay.
They're going out to get it as, um, Lillian and Zach took another one early. I'll tell you about it to the chair, so Candy can push on, you know, it's gonna finish up his work today.
Okay.
So, okay.
So what happened, I apologize.
Uh.
Um, Candy was on his way to Christmas Valley this morning and hit a deer out, uh, at the bottom of a fisk kill, between bottom of a fisk kill there at, uh, Ashridge Place and, um, Lisa Cahill, or the Cahill Place there. Um, so, uh, it was.
Candy, Candy didn't get hurt?
No, nope, not at all.
No injuries?
No injuries and he was alone, he didn't have any clients with him as well.
Well, thank you.
You betcha. Turn it down.
No, that, that's good, thank you Jake.
Appreciate it.
So, next la- last item of the day is, uh, Lake County mandate resolution, um, action consideration. Kind of put this together, um, over the last couple of weeks because we're, we're anticipating some pretty significant impacts to, uh, our ability to provide services in the county. Um, do we wanna have some more discussion about the language? I know Commissioner Albertson, you sent out an email, uh, with some things that you'd like to see in it. I'm just not sure I can, I know really how to work that in.
So, Commissioner Schulenberger, your response, I guess, were you responding that you have to sell us on the resolution or you have to sell us on what I emailed you?
Uh, I would like to hear more about what you emailed us because, uh, what I read, uh, to me, Commissioner Albertson, just didn't feel like it fit, uh, with what we have at this point. But, um, I'm listening.
I guess, so, to, um, to go against the governor's mandate. It's, we're committing a misdemeanor. And to protect us and our community and to show why we're doing this, that is the, the defense law. I guess it's not law, but it's what they use to combat a defense or to use as a defense. It's called, um, choice of evils. And it's firstly states that you're doing wrong to protect the community for a worse outcome. So we're, we're creating a misdemeanor to prevent our hospital, everything from shutting down and maybe costing multiple lives that don't have anything to do with the, the, the thing. They'll close the hospital in emergency situations and that sort of thing. And that's my thought process behind it all. Um, if you guys don't think we need it in there, um, that's fine. The reason I put it in there though was to show the community and the governor's office, not only do we have legal back, backing by stating those things, but it gives us the reason why, so.
Well, I mean, I, I, I think I understand the premise. Um, the choice of evils, I, I wrote a big essay on this years ago when I was younger. Um, it's something that's done pretty much every day, especially during time of war. Uh, they, that's why they had to come up with rules of engagement because it gets out of hand really easy, it's, it kind of falls under the greater good category. The actual, I, I went and looked it up again because I couldn't remember it. Necessitas vasit licitum quod alias non est licitum. That's what the original Latin term means in, in legal terms. And it means necessity makes the lawful, makes lawful, which otherwise is unlawful. And, and what, I think the argument you're trying to make is, is we're, and, and I, and I wanna, I'm, I'm complaining this over in my mind a little bit here because I'm not actually trying to go against the governor's mandate necessarily. I'm simply, we're acknowledging that the mandate is going to damage us.
Creating a crisis.
Is creating a crisis in itself. And so, and that, and that, so I agree with you that it does kind of put us into a category where the necessity, um, may have to make lawful, which is otherwise being made unlawful by the governor's mandate. Um, it's just that when you go down the road of choice of evils, you get into that category of choosing the lesser of two evils that can, that's, uh, you know, what, when two people live for one who dies, you know, so to speak, you know, being the greater good of, it, it's a, it's a, a road that can get really out of hand. Um, even the military had to adopt, like I said, the rules of engagement in order to cope with that. Um, I, I understand where, where we're going here with this language, but again, like, I wanna take it back to, I'm not necessarily looking to go against the mandate. This, the, because it's just a resolution. But we're acknowledging, and again, like, uh, just going down to the therefore, be it resolved, Lake County Board of Commissioners request that the state of Oregon immediately withdraw its vaccine mandate or to provide an exception, not an exemption, for rural frontier counties to prevent further erosion and departure of providers and core public service, including first responders, healthcare providers, et cetera, educators and staff. And I think, because I think we all know in this room that we're looking at a pretty significant crisis. Just my kind of thoughts on it, I, you know, I, I kind of know where that law is coming from. There's a whole bunch of other Latin terms that kind of come out of that. Um, public necessity being greater than private. It's a whole big giant argument on old Latin law. Um, but, uh, I'm not saying that we aren't going to end up there in that situation, but the necessity, I think, is, is born out of the requirements that the state is putting on us and our county. Um, I'm not sure with this resolution is necessary because again, this res- this resolution is not a declaration of emergency. It's just a resolution acknowledging that we are foreseeing a state of emergency and a crisis at some point going forward, as of October eighteenth. Um, I don't, I don't know, just open conversation, I guess, at this point.
Yeah, Commissioner Albertson, uh, this language that you, you presented to us, uh, may be pertinent if we have to create a, the next one.
In, in a declaration.
But the way I see it, we haven't created, we haven't committed a misdemeanor yet. Uh, we're simply stating, uh, our current situation, what these mandates are going to do for our county and asking them to, uh, withdraw. Because I don't feel like we've committed a crime and I don't feel like, uh, we have imminent injury at this point.
I'm with you a hundred percent, um, but I do wanna state for the record, James or Commissioner Williams, you've stated that we're not against the mandate. Well, for the record, I am against the mandate. Um, and, uh, however you guys wanna word it, but I just wanna publicly know, I am a hundred percent against it, and so.
No, I, I understand, maybe.
And I will not budge on this one. And like I told you before, um, I'm a hundred percent against this and I will never, while I'm a commissioner, of course, might be able to do something that's similar. If they wanna have a, if they wanna, um, have a vaccine, have right at it, but you need to have a choice, just for the record.
I, I understand, and for the record, I, I'm completely against this as well. Maybe it was poor choice of words on my part. Uh, it's not that, uh, because I'm fully against the mandate, completely. I mean, I, I don't even know, it, it's, it kind of goes without saying. Um, and that's why I, I wrote this resolution. To Commissioner Schulenberger's point, at this point, we're not actively trying to, uh, we haven't committed an actual crime. We're saying that if, because the mandate that she's made goes in, it becomes a, a major issue as of the eighteenth of October. And, uh, and then at that point, that's when you're in violation. And so, uh, at this, when, in writing this resolution, we're mainly saying, this is what you're doing. This is what we're seeing, what we're, what we're, or seeing is going to take place within our county. Stop. Like, just immediately cease this mandate because it is, this is how it's going to hurt us and hurt our people. And, and then at that point, it gets into an area of whether or not we will actually be in open violation or in opposition of the, uh, um, governor's mandate. At this point, we want to just, we're, we're having a conversation with the governor's office and with the state saying that this is, uh, you need to stop the mandate.
This is how fragile we are as a county. Uh, this many workers, uh, you know, or we don't state how many, but this many services that potentially will be no longer provided to the county would be a, the urgency for us easily.
Right, and just for the record, I mean, like, Melanie was anticipating that we would have some public comment tomorrow. And we all know this as commissioners because we, we've heard it. Um, we will have EMS districts and ASAs within Lake County that will not be able to operate. And we have, um, ambulances just won't be able to run. You know, for instance, you know, I thought it was funny, I, I, I used numbers at one point. Couple of weeks ago, I was explaining to someone at the state that we had seven volunteers in Paisley to run the ambulances and about half of them would not be able to operate the ambulance, so they'd lose about half their volunteers. Um, and they took that and they ran with it and they went and said, but they'll still be able to operate because they're only losing half. So they'll have, out of the seven, they'll have three that still will be able to operate. Those three that, um, would be leaving, or three or four that would be leaving, the half that's gone were the EMTs. The, the, the ones that were staying were just drivers. And you don't operate an ambulance with just the drivers. So they took the numbers that I presented and they excuse it. Right, they're not, you, you don't run an ambulance with just drivers, you need an EMT onboard. And so this is, and so Paisley is one of them. They won't have, they won't be able to operate under this mandate. And, and we know this, we've, we've, we've seen these issues across the whole county now. And this is the worst time ever to be looking at firing nurses. Um, and, you know, so I, I wanted to avoid going into real detail on the numbers. Um, but at the same time, I wanted to explain exactly how this was, uh, going to affect everyone. And I, I don't know, should we read this out loud for those that are watching on video? Um, it's a little bit of a read.
Yeah.
Um, it's one page, I got it down to one page, it was difficult.
But, yeah, the intent is that we're, uh, meeting the needs of our constituents to stand up or support them and continue to provide the services that are needed here in Lake County. Yeah. So, back to your, uh, point, Commissioner Albertson, are you okay with, uh, leaving this off for now? Or?
I'm fine with it, I just.
Okay.
I just kind of wanted to give you a, a heads up of what I think is going to be.
Okay, and there were a little computer second.
Yeah, in fact, I would, I would bet on it.
The, one thing, uh, you can read this if you want, Commissioner Chairman Williams, but the first whereas, and we, due to SARS dash COV dash two, is that the proper, uh, recognition of the, what we had going on?
Yeah, so.
I mean, you've seen so many variations.
I know, so the, uh, the reason I put that in there was because they have their actual, um.
Uh, they just.
B one six seven one. Yeah, that's the actual Delta variant, that's the actual definition of the Delta. And the reason I put that in there is this, and I'll explain this and pull this apart, and I think this is important. So, the recent, it, it's, it goes in here, uh, on that first whereas, the recent surge, uh, hospitalization and pub, and public health concerns due to SARS COVID two and the B one six one seven Delta variant of SARS COVID two has further strained many providers of core public safety services, including first responders, emergency services, healthcare providers and educators and related staff. Whereas, in an effort to address this new surge, and I'm, I'm pulling the, the Delta and the SARS apart in that first whereas, um, in an effort to address the new surge, the state of Oregon has attempted to further increase percentages of Oregonians who are vaccinated against SARS COVID two by imposing vaccination mandates on certain sectors, including educators, healthcare providers and emergency services, state workers. And the reason I felt that that was important to pull apart was because the variant, there isn't really a vaccine for the variants. There's a vaccine for SARS COVID two that went through a process of FDA approval for the, the, just the one out of the three. And, but the variant, along with the other variants, there isn't necessarily a, um, a vaccine for that. It provo, according to them, the vaccine provides some protection against those variants, but it is lessening and lessening continuously. And I just, I wanted to pull that apart a little bit because I didn't see that reflected in any of the other resolutions that were passed by other counties, that we're still, we're putting a mandate in place to address SARS COV two when what's actually hitting us is the Delta variant of SARS COV two. And I use the actual legal definition of the Delta variant to try and pull that apart because here we are putting a requirement on our educators, our, our healthcare, emergency services and state workers when we're actually getting hit by a different version of the virus. But we're saying that, well, it provides some protection. But as it, uh, we see that the virus is mutating and it is, um, building resistance to the vaccines and to the shot. So, I, it's not, I wasn't trying to, you know, it's not like a make or break of it, but that's why I use those legal terms, is to try and separate those two pieces out. Because we are dealing with variants, and so to speak, while we're applying a vaccine that's just for the SARS COV two. But, uh.
Well, I think it's important that, uh, we can table this for tomorrow if we wanna have more discussion or we can get it out there. But either way, uh, I think it's important that we respond for the people like Candy.
Right.
To the governor.
Absolutely, and I think that, uh, she needs to know that this is how it's going to affect us. And I think, you know, we. And I think, you know, we, someone brought it up to me that, you know, we managed to keep our state prison open. Because we opened a dialectic with the governor. We worked at it. We worked hard. And we were able to achieve what some people thought was impossible. And, and I think by doing the same of, you know, pat, looking at this resolution, going through the process appropriately, having open discussion and debate, and having, you know, our, hopefully our EMS folks will be here tomorrow, and some of our other folks from the community to provide public comment on this. Um, looking for even just an exception to the rural frontier counties. I have a little bit of a problem with that, because I don't want to loo- leave some of our other non-rural counties out of it. Where, oh, it's okay for the state to, to inflict these damages on a non-rural county, but it's, yeah, I, I, I don't know if I'm not, I'm, I'm quite there. But something's better than nothing. And I, I personally feel that the state needs to just immediately withdraw the mandate. And they should not be inflicting these kind of requirements and imposing these restrictions on any Oregonian. But, uh.
Yeah, I'm, I'm there too, James. Uh, I don't. It's not just because it's craziness, it's unconstitutional. And we were sworn to uphold the constitution and, and protect our people from this very thing that's happening. And so I oppose it because of a ton of reasons. And, um, not necessarily because we're a rural county, because it's unconstitutional, period.
Right, because we feel it's wrong.
Craziness.
Well, and to make Commissioner Schulerberger's point, I think it would be good to table this for tomorrow. I actually want to take some time today and go back over some of the language from, uh, Douglas County's resolution. Um, I read through all of them. I think I forwarded you guys the email with all the resolutions. There was some language that I really liked in the Douglas County, um, uh, in the resolution that they passed.
It's on the one we were just talking about.
Right, it's, it's very similar. And, and I think, again, this goes into, uh, the language that you provided to us in the email on necessity makes legal what otherwise would be illegal. Um, it goes into that element of the choosing the lesser of two evils. Um, because at some point, we can see it, if, for us to do our duty and to feel that we are being righteous in the administration of our, the duties of our office, it may require us at times to take stances against the state. We've been doing that since we took office. When we go to the legislature and we argue against laws that we feel are unjust and have unjust impacts on our community. This is what we do for a living. This is, this is our job, is to put our hand up and remind the state that, you know, no, this is, this is too far. This is how it's going to impact us, and hopefully they will see reason and back off, um, and stand down. So I think, uh, and, and at some point, if the state doesn't listen, we are forced at times to take some pretty hard stances. And that puts us into that category of, you know, some of the language that you were, you brought up. Um, I, I would like to kind of take this evening and kind of go over some of this other language, because I understand your, uh, position of wanting to maybe put some more teeth into this and, uh, see if we can make it a little bit more firm. Um, and if I can flush that out in any way and find a way to incorporate it within this and still, you know, maintain one page and not get too far into the weeds on it, I'm more than happy to do so. So, um, I'm just, I'm just not quite sure when I was reading that language last night, again, on how to incorporate choice of evil into something that I, you know, is not in any way, shape, or form meant to, uh, give the perception that we feel like we're doing any evil whatsoever. We feel like what we're doing is in the right interest of the people. So, uh, with that, I will kneel back. Because I'm monologuing at this point.
Uh, I appreciate the thought of, uh, let's, let's revisit this again tomorrow morning. It'll give us, we have some time in our schedule. And I think that allows us to solidify our thoughts and give the very best product we can out there so that we're stepping forward what we can all agree on.
Right.
I think we're close. Uh, let's just, uh, let's look at it one more time.
Sounds good. All right. Um, nothing else to come before us today. Um, we, we can adjourn the meeting at eleven sixteen. Commissioner Albertson, really thank you for joining us today.
Thank you.
Yeah.
For.
Hope you feel better soon.
Thank you, guys.
All right. We jerk?
Yeah.